All right, it's two o'clock and so I want to stay to the time period. This is a meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College. Today is Thursday, September 13th, 2018. And like I said, it's a little after 2:00 PM. We're in the Alene Australian Community Room of the Doss Student Center. It is located at 225 College Park Drive, Weatherford, Parker County, Texas. And we're here, there is a quorum, and we're here to consider and act on the agenda that's been posted. And the first item on the agenda is to call the meeting to order, which I am doing. And we'll ask Mr. Baker to give the invocation, and then I'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
You bet. Please bow with me. Lord, we're very thankful for today. We're thankful for the rain you've provided to our county and our area. We're thankful for all the students you've brought here this semester. Thank you for entrusting us with them, and may we lead them and guide them, and for them to teach us as well this semester. Thank you for our board. Please guide them, and Dr. Farmer, and the rest of our family here. Your name we pray. Amen.
Let's stand, place the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I go into the second item on the agenda, I've been meaning to mention one thing. As we go through our process to hold the meeting, I think it would be good to make sure that as we get to each item, we take the time to single everyone out. You know, as if, Dr. Dixon, do you have any comments? Go through that so that we have a chance to make sure everybody has their opportunity to talk and make their comments about whatever might be appropriate. And then make sure that every individual will have the opportunity to say what they want to say and not be interrupted. And then that way, we can let that person, let each trustee speak their mind. I don't think we're talking about a real long time for people to make their comments, but then we can move on through and make sure that everybody gets their say and that they're not interrupted, and then we can hopefully get through the agenda and everybody has a chance to talk. I just don't want to miss someone being able to discuss or make points about whatever might be the topic of discussion at that time. And so if we can do that, that will be good. Because I don't want anybody to be cut short. Okay? All right. And really, it's going to be the same way if it involves someone that is up here speaking that's on the agenda. We want them to be able to fully state their mind about what might be involved. So with that in mind, are there any questions? If not, we'll move to second item on the agenda, which is open forum for individuals not on the agenda.
There are none.
We have none, so we'll move to number three, President's Report. And we'll ask, let's move to recognitions. Dr. Farmer, can you take over?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognizations. I would like to congratulate Weatherford College alumna Monica Olivias for recently being named the Ector County ISD Teacher of the Year. We are very proud of Monica and her meaningful contributions to society. The Parker County Women's and Newcomers Club recently surpassed the $80,000 mark in the club scholarship fund. The club scholarships are targeted at female students of non-traditional age. They are changing lives, and we are deeply appreciative of their service. The Weatherford College Sonography Program recently hosted a training for 39 medical residents from Medical City, Weatherford. The medical residents represented about a dozen states from across the country. We are very proud not only of our sonography program, but of all of our health science programs for their collective contributions to society. And finally, I would like to recognize Dr. Sarah Locke. Dr. Locke and her small team are responsible for both dual credit and online learning. These two programs were the fastest-growing instructional sectors again this year. Dual credit grew by 13.4 percent, and online learning grew by 4.8 percent. Dr. Locke, would you please stand and let us congratulate you? Congratulations, Sarah. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. In accordance with this policy, the following individuals have submitted resignations. Joe Lewis, an instructor in the Respiratory Care Program, resigned effective 8/31/18. And Deborah Miron, an instructor in the Occupational Therapy Assistant Program, resigned effective 1/31/2019. We thank both of these team members for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment update. I am very pleased to report that the official fall 2018 student enrollment for the system set an all-time record high at 6,406 students. However, the real story is not record enrollment. The real story is that through unprecedented collaboration between faculty and administration, 36 additional small sections were consolidated, resulting in a cost savings of $89,252.38. By employing enrollment management techniques and enforcing existing policies such as small section cancellation and late registration deadlines, we collaboratively improved the overall financial position of the college and transitioned to a strategic growth model. Mr. Chairman, that concludes the President's Report.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
Can I add something to that? In regard to, I just spent a little bit of time at Baylor All Saints, and my discharging nurse was an RN who started here with Alex eBay and with Don Calden. And she had their picture in her phone, and she wanted to be remembered. Beatrice from Peaster Wonderfield.
That's great. Thank you for sharing.
Anybody have any comments? Dr. Marlet, any comments or questions? Roger?
I think that's incredibly good news, and that's why we brought that man in here. Just to bring his ideas and see how they're going to work and help save us money and provide quality education.
Thank you. All right. Anything else?
You were mentioning that there'd be a time that we could make comments.
Yes, sir.
Was that at the beginning, or will that be later on? Or when will that be?
You know, Dr. Marlet, if you've got a comment to make, I would ask you to do it.
At this time?
Yes, sir.
Very good. I'd like to do that.
I think you're live right now.
Live right now. I can't compliment or be more positive about the action taken by President Farmer vis-à-vis the county of Wise County, the judge, and the Commissioners Court. They got together, when it hasn't been done in a long time, and solved a lot of problems. And it was really good. And the letters that this board signed was presented to them the other day, and it was well-received, and you could tell it was a very positive kind of thing that was happening relative to the relationship of Wise County and the mother campus. And so that was very good. Also, I'd like to say, you know, believe it or not, Duane Redd, you know, he is a good spokesman. And yesterday, we had a class, whole auditorium full of freshman students at Bridgeport, and today, we had a whole auditorium full of freshman students at Decatur. And he was, gave a talk about what's available at the campus there in Wise County, and a new music program. But it was a very positive, he had all their attention, and it was a very positive thing. We need to do more things like that if we can figure out how to do it. So that's what I'd like to say.
Well, Dr. Marlet, thank you. Anybody have any other comments in that regard? Mr. Durk, do you have any comments? Your name was involved.
Always a pleasure to serve with Dr. Marlet. Now, let me tell you, Dr. Marlet is doing a very good thing up there. And when he asked me to go up there, when he told me what we're going to be doing, you're going to have three violinists playing for freshmen, and I thought, oh, boy, this is, you know, not going to be good. Let me tell you, they were one of the best audiences. They sat there, they applauded without, it was a very, very good program. Same thing today in Decatur. So I applaud you for what you're doing in that program. I think it'd be very good, very good recruiting.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move to the fourth item on the agenda, which would be the consent agenda and financial So I'll ask it this way. Has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes? Are there any questions? Any comments? Do they appear to be correct, as everybody remembers? All right. The recommendation would be that we approve the minutes as presented. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
A second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That motion passes. The other items on the consent agenda would be the financial reports. Are there any questions about the financial reports ending August 31, 2018? All right. Quarterly investment report, same question about that. Any questions or comments about that item, which is 4C? Then there's 4D, sealed bids for food service products and supplies for 2018, '19, number Any comments or questions about that? There's information?
We got that in the text. It's all good. It's all clear.
Okay. I know that came as a supplement.
And I'm sorry it was this late.
No, that's okay. We appreciate it. Y'all have a lot to do.
We got it.
All right. So what I want to do is ask if there's a motion to approve B, C, and D on the consent agenda and the financial report that's part of that. Is there a motion to that effect?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, that part of the item is approved, and then we'll go to budget amendment number one, item on the agenda, item E. And who wants to make that report?
I'd be glad to.
That would be Dr.?
I'd be glad to. This is something that Dr. Farmer and I worked on together for Wise County in looking at that. What we tried to do was to alleviate those indirect costs that have not been a, it's been a sore subject for quite some time. With Dr. Farmer's conferences with Judge Clark, he said, I believe he said he understood administrative costs and things like that. It was just that Wise County didn't always understand what indirect costs meant. So what we basically did, we went back in, and the state appropriations come in, and a large portion of the appropriation are for administrative costs, such as running the main system here at the college. And so we reduced the amount that we were allocating toward Wise County, and that enabled us to help offset that indirect cost sum. And then we also, they had emailed us that there was an increase of, would have an increase in, no, what we did on those tax revenues were that we went back and budgeted at 100%. I looked back over the history of our tax collection in Wise County, and it has been over 100% for the last five or more years. So they had always asked us to budget at the 98% as a conservative measure, but that was also causing us to look like our transfer had to be much larger. And then at the end of the year, we would have dollars left over, and it would, you know, we'd look strange. So we've asked that we go ahead and budget at 100% this year. That also helped us in reducing the transfer from reserves. When we finished, we also had a WC/WC contingency of approximately $50,000. I've also always had the practice here that we held a contingency in our general institutional funds of 1%, and that's for the whole college. And when we set up Wise County, we did the same. So it was 50,000 in there. In analyzing that, thinking about it more, actually, when we've got the ability to transfer from their reserves, there wasn't that need for that contingency there, so we've reduced And all this was in mind, with trying to get rid of that indirect cost. When it was all said and done, we're down to only a required transfer of 220,000 that had to be recorded as a budgeted item. Now, we may not even go into that, you know, if we're, have a good year, and we're going to analyze our costs as we go along. Dr. O'Meara is alerted, has been alerted to this, and he's going to watch our expenses very closely. So hopefully, we can come out at the year-end and have a black budget, and not in the red, with a necessary transfer. And that will set us in a much better favor with the possibility of refinancing.
All right. I'd like to thank Dr. Cantrell for her efforts in doing a lot of work to move towards this goal of moving Wise County out of the red into the black, and not having that transfer out of reserves to set the stage for refinancing of that facility. As you know, that's currently financed at about 8% interest rate, and if we can get that refinanced, we're going to save a tremendous amount of money that will benefit both campuses tremendously. So we're working collaboratively with our esteemed friends and partners in Wise County, and Dr. Cantrell and her team to set that in place, and we're very optimistic that we have a very good shot of making that happen this year.
All right.
I did send a copy of the revised budget, how it would read today, to Wise County last weekend in anticipation that you all would approve this today, so they would have that for their meeting.
Are there any questions, Dr. Marlet? Any questions?
There's not. It's nothing but, it's a very positive thing that's happening as far as Wise County's concerned.
Mr. Gazzard, any questions? Any comments? Ms. Morris? Anyone else? We'll just kind of go that way. I have no questions or comments. Is there a motion to approve budget consent item number 4E, which would be budget amendment number one? Is there a motion to approve? Is there a second?
A second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. So we'll move now to agenda item number five, consideration possible action, sealed proposal on comprehensive system for information collection, rubric management, course evaluation, and analytics. That's going to be Dr. Cantrell.
This is a very collaborative effort this last year to find the right software subscription that could provide all these services to us. Our four main functions were student learning, outcomes measurement, collection of information and data, analytics of that data, and providing course evaluations. We had only one company. We did advertise, we did all the things we've done before, but we had only one company, Campus Labs, that responded to the RFP. This is a company that we were interested to start with, I'll have to say. But when it was all said and done, we had a committee, went through a committee process, and it was approved that it met all requirements 100%. As I mentioned, we've got people in the room, Arlene and we both, that will be users, everyone on campus. And this is almost a requirement of guided pathways, that we use more, we're more data-oriented, we're more analytical in how we serve our students, we're working with them. So this purchase will be paid for in out-of-institutional reserve of $50,781. Student services, $25,683, and instruction for a total of $102,077. Now, $20,000 of that is implementation, but it took continuing expense every year of approximately $80,000 to have this subscription here. But I think it'll do a tremendous amount of work for Weatherford College. It will cut labor costs. It will do monumental and improve our student success. I'm sure others could speak to that.
Would anyone that's directly affected out in the audience want to talk about that? Anyone?
I can speak to it.
Thank you very much.
The Campus Labs product, I kind of think of it as a ecosystem, because there are several different modules that all work together. At the core of this system is a product called Baseline. Baseline is a survey engine. It allows us to build multiple types of surveys and collect data from students. It integrates with our student information system, so we don't have to go out of our way to collect demographics. We can automatically join that up while maintaining anonymity of respondents. There's a couple of features of this that directly impact guided pathways. One, it allows faculty to do formative assessment. So let's say you're in your classroom, and you've just covered a particular module, and you want to find out if it works. You can direct all your students to use their cell phone to go to this site. They can answer a series of questions. You get immediate feedback on their performance of that email in the situation, how the students did on that particular module. Gives you an opportunity to correct course in the middle of your lecture if you need to, or proceed pace, however things turn out. The course evaluation section is the end-of-term course evaluation. It is based on a nationally-normed instrument from the IDEA group. All these will allow us to compare how our professors perform in relation to national benchmarks, to departmental benchmarks, to college benchmarks. We can determine the level of granularity we want to go to, to find out how our professors are ranking according to their students. Now, one of the added benefits of this is if there is a problem area, the system will redirect them to possible solutions, pedagogical solutions for addressing the issue. Another feature of the system is a product called Beacon, which will serve student services. It is a queue management and advising tool, again, a guided pathways complement. It'll let advisors know who's waiting and what they need, and they can integrate their records. In all, this spans the entirety of data from our student information system to anything that we collect on our students through the survey system. There are no side loads. There is no your data, your data, this data. There is just data. So we can see into our students' performance at a level we will have never been able to do before. So using this, we can support the Guided Pathways Initiative, we can support faculty in formative assessment of their curriculum, and we can find out how well they're doing in classes according to students and offer them opportunities for professional development.
Thank you for that. Any trustee comment on that?
It just blows my mind. We so need that.
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Marlet?
I guess that those instruments have been tested for reliability before you get them, but not here, not on-site.
Right. They're nationally-normed since the late '70s. So we will look at our data as in comparison with nationally-normed standards and see how we compare it there, and then progress and see what these things, not only tell us in context of the national dialogue on education, but tells us what they mean to us here. So we'll be able to disaggregate them.
We've done work with Campus Labs before. Arlene, who's used that with our Southern Association responses that we've had to have. So this isn't the first time that we've ever had any experience with Campus Labs. So we have a good history with them. Is that not true, Arlene?
That's true. And this is good because it will integrate with our assessment, our compliance reports to SaaS, if I need temp or data from these other components that's seamless. So it's really a good fit for us.
Thank you.
Thank you. A note in the recommendation, and this is, the recommendation is to award the proposal to Campus Labs, subject to general council review and approval. When will that take?
We haven't received a contract as of yet. Once the contract gets hit, we'll forward it to Dan, where he is way down there at him, and then upon his recommendations.
All right. Any comments or questions on the board? All right. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees award proposal to the vendor, which would be Campus Labs, Inc., as presented today and as, and subject to the contract with authorization to enter into the contract. Is there a motion to that effect?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
That's approved. Thank you very much. Item number six is reports. 6A would be guided pathways, and that would be Dr. Cantrell.
Thank you. We continue on with our work with guided pathways and that Monday. We're preparing for our third guided pathways workshop that will be held on October the 5th. The workshop will focus on advising, and is based on the Institute Number Four that they attended, that we all attended in the spring. And then the fifth one will be in November, and it will also focus on advising, but it will bring us a little bit further along. The Institute Number Four was Front Door Academic Success, which focused on the essential elements of pathways design and the strategies for improving the academic success of students. Topics included improving the high school partnerships, aligning endorsements in dual credit with college meta-majors, developmental education co-requisits, and adult education. Those are areas that we're continuing to work on at the college. Shannon McNabb, Jared Abraham are working on with these developmental education. Sarah has worked a great deal with the dual credit, along with others. Basically, during our workshop on October the 5th, we're going to, it will be onboarding practices, we'll review those, and institutional advising initiatives. Everyone on the campus will be invited. Anyone that's involved in touching students will more than likely be there. We are asking, we are going to identify the hurdles and develop solutions to assist with the student matriculation. There'll be two primary focuses on onboarding with effective communication to incoming students, and examining processes currently in place to ensure a student-centered approach. We're going to ask for new surveys, possibly ahead of time and at the workshop, to see what problems we think are out there, getting different perspectives of what we can do to improve student success, what's standing in, what obstacles are out there that are bothering students. The future of advising for student success of our currently enrolled students will be decentralized with this model, and it will involve a team approach, which we are trying to incorporate. Everyone at the meeting on Monday were unanimous in saying, well, we need to have our board members there if they'd like to come. So we're starting about, what time, Adam? Do you? 9:00? 9:00 o'clock? Anyone's, everyone's invited. We will have there with us on that day, which we're very glad, a representative from the Elucian new ERP system. And it's sort of, we're working into our big, it will be our big kickoff for that. And they're going to highlight with that what the Elucian system is going to do to provide support for advising, and showing us, they're going, we're going to have a working lunch, and work through lunch, and with their presentation. And so I think it'll be a good day for the entire faculty and staff to see what were the changes that were, I know Adam and them have already made some, but the changes that are going to be forthcoming that will improve student success. So once again, we'd very much like to encourage you all to come and be a part with us. We are, then in November, on November 14th through 16th- We are, then in November, on November fourteenth through sixteenth in Dallas, I'll remind you once again that the Texas success pays for seven individuals to go to this. It's completely pay-for, and then anyone we want to bring in addition to that, it's at two hundred and fifty dollars a person, which is very minimal for the amount of information that we do get. All fifty community colleges are present there. They're all talking about what they're doing for the guided pathways. Some of them have been into it longer than we have. So we're learning from them as well as the new people that, I mean, we're new, but I think we've come a long way in a year. So I think they recognize us as that. And so once again, we'd like to invite you all, if there's any member that would like to take part. And this is a true working workshop, basically, because we get into groups and we sit there and hash things out with each other. They bring experts in and tell us what we should be doing and all that, and then we break out and talk about what we've just heard and what would enable us to move along better. So it's a great workshop, and anyone that would like to go, our registrations have to be in by October the eighteenth. And so if you'd like to, I encourage you by the next board meeting, I think it's on, is it on the thirteenth or the eleventh? If you could tell me by then, I could get everyone registered that would like to go. So we're going to take, right now we've got, I think, eight confirmed. Our president agreed yesterday that he's going. For the presidents, they have a representative from the Aspen Institute that's there to talk to presidents only. No one else is allowed in the meeting. And I know that they get some really good information from that.
And if we're still, the workshop on October fifth, going to be?
October the fifth, we're going to do it in the fine arts, I believe. Yes. And a reservation's not necessary for that.
Teresa, can you, can you send my paralegal, tell her that I'd like to attend the one on the fifth and also tell her on the one on the fourteenth? And tell her, put those on my calendar if you don't mind?
Where is that?
Because between now and the end of this meeting, I won't get that done.
The one is at, is at the Hilton Anatole in Dallas, on the fourteenth through the sixteenth.
It's through fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Better tell her that, too. Okay.
I'll let you know a little bit more.
Okay.
Send you a schedule so you can see what's going to take place at the table if you feel like it. I mean, you'll be, you'll be more, we're giving input to each other at that table when you sit down, so.
Are there any questions by the trustees anywhere?
No, I mean, I'm.
Dr. Marlet, any from you?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. And this is an information-only report, so anything else, Dr. Cantrell?
No. The group has, the leaders that we've had to come together, we're adding to those all along, and they've been very loyal at showing up for meetings and hasn't been a problem to move forward.
Thank you very much. All right. Second, a report on the agenda is annual Weatherford College Foundation update. And let's see, that's going to be?
That'll be me.
The man standing at the podium.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. This is our annual report from Weatherford College Foundation to the Board of Trustees, as Max said. And let me just say that it is a, it's a true honor to be able to work with the foundation and work for the students of Weatherford College. I was reminded last Thursday night at our scholarship donor appreciation dinner of the importance of this. You know, Dr. Farmer's right, Weatherford College changes lives. And we hear that time and time again. In my office, we're reminded time and time again from thank you letters, from students calling, from donors and their excitement. So thank you for letting us work with the college so much. Just a reminder, you guys know most of the first part of this, but just as a reminder, what the mission of the foundation is, is to raise financial support, of course, to benefit the students of Weatherford College and to advance the college as a whole. The foundation was established in nineteen seventy-eight. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, but we are a component unit for your audit. So when the auditors bring their report, the foundation books are part of that audit as well. And I've got to say something about the foundation board. We have a twenty-five-member board. This is our executive committee that meets quarterly. And over the last year, when I was interim president, this group really stepped up, especially that top name, Bob Glenn, the president. An alumnus of Weatherford College. If you see Bob around town, we please thank him, because he really, he stepped up and did a lot more than he would normally have to do during, during that transition year, and he's still doing a great job for us. So these folks do a great job. Our foundation board, that's the rest of the board right there, it's really an all-volunteer board now, save for two ex-official members, Dr. Farmer and Judy McAnally, who's the official liaison between your board and the foundation board. Everybody else, all the voting members are volunteers, and they just love this college. And there are some names on there that any organization would like to have on their board. So I'm very proud of them. How do we raise funds? Pretty simply, donations from individuals and businesses. That's where about seventy percent of donations come from in philanthropy across the nation. You would think it'd be from corporations, but most of it is from individuals, and that's the same for Weatherford College Foundation as well. Special events, we do host some special events. We have a golf tournament coming up on October the fourth. I've got some information here. If you'd like to join us or if you'd like to sponsor, we appreciate that. And then planned giving is really the most significant giving. It's where donors remember the college in their will. And as we found out from the Marjorie Alkec gift, these are the kind of transformative gifts that college can experience. So I'd like to talk about the foundation and how we've grown. This is over the last ten years. The net assets of our foundation, the endowment, and then all the rest of the holdings of the foundation, this is us. As of about a month ago, the last financial report I received from the business office, great relationship of the business office. They do a wonderful job in helping the foundation keep its books. But you can see the type of growth we've had over the last ten years in our foundation, and I expect that to continue to grow. About eight point eight million dollars in net assets as of about sixty days ago. What do we fund? You know we fund scholarships. We'll be talking about that here in just a few minutes, but that's not all we fund. Our employee excellence awards, our faculty member of the year and staff member of the year, we fund that. The employee service awards, every year we honor employees who have been with us five, ten, fifteen, twenty years. Foundation pays for those. Retirement awards, crystal plaque and a check and a nice thank you for their service. The foundation funds those as well. And then other special projects that come up from time to time. You remember our capital campaign when we raised two point four million dollars two years ago, two million dollar goal? That was brought upon by several things, including a building project, which we helped accentuate that building project here on campus. Stop me anytime if you have questions or comments. Scholarships, very proud to announce that in the last academic year, the foundation gave over two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in scholarships back to Weatherford College students. That is a record. We're very proud of that. That is because of a lot of hard work from donors, volunteers. Our faculty and staff have a hand in that, and that is, as a matter of fact, I'll tell you about the growth of that right now. So the last ten years, you can see how our scholarships given have grown. As I mentioned, two hundred and sixty-three thousand. And really, you notice that the growth got steep starting right about here and shooting up, and this was during our capital campaign. And it wasn't just that all that money was given during that two- to three-year period, it was that donors began to get in the habit that year of giving to Weatherford College and to the foundation. And they continue to give year in and year out, and I think that our presence was elevated in the community. And I think we're about to see that happen again in another way during our one hundred and fifty year. We're proud of that growth of the last few years, and all credit goes to the donors. So just to summarize that amount, one point one million dollars in scholarships given to students in the last five years, two point one million in the last thirteen years. And the future is bright. I feel like really with Dr. Farmer's support and enthusiasm and ideas, we're going to see another spike in giving to the foundation and giving to Weatherford College. We have the brick campaign happening right now. If you didn't get a brick brochure, let me know. I'll get one to you. That's going to help fund part of the celebration next year. And of course, the bricks are going to be out here in front of the academic building and a permanent reminder of folks that have walked these halls over the years. It's been very, very successful so far. You've heard about the roundabout out in front of the Stewart Field softball field in the Alkec Fine Arts Center. We have some ideas on enhancing that. The city has been very generous, and as we start to nail down dollars, Dr. Farmer and I have been talking about some ways that we might be able to enhance that through the foundation, through giving to the foundation. And I think we're going to be showing you some exciting things about that in the future. And then also, we really have some opportunities in Wise County and in Granbury and Mineral Wells. You know, we haven't done a lot of focused fundraising in those communities. Really Wise County, we had a very nice fundraiser when the campus opened, but it's time to go back, and it's time to give those donors an opportunity to present and to, to help their students as well. So I'm excited about the possibilities there. I think 2019, we'll see some really exciting things for the foundation. Do you have any questions about the college foundation?
Do we get involved with National Giving Day?
We don't. You know, I, I thought about that, and it's a good idea. You have to apply to that. It's coming up next week, right?
I think it's the twentieth.
Texas Gives comes up soon, but I don't know about National.
Right. It's a good program.
It is.
We have several local organizations that are involved in National Giving Day. I know the Weatherford ISD Education Foundation does. You know, I was a little hesitant. I don't want to compete with them.
No.
But, but we could look at that. You bet. Anything else?
Does Weatherford College, Weatherford High School System and their foundation, their education foundation, they have a support section for innovative activities among teaching staff like?
They do.
Like Bridgeport and Decatur.
That's primarily what they do. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's primarily what we, I wonder if that has any application for Weatherford College for innovative teaching ideas and our equipment or procedure or methodology?
I think that's a tremendous idea. You know, we thought about setting up a grant-type system where faculty and staff could apply, you know, written proposals, et cetera, similar to what they do at the ISD, to be honest with you. And I think that's a tremendous idea that we ought to consider.
You already have some templates there.
We do.
That you could almost, you know, vote right in.
That's right. We have some great minds here at this college. In fact, we'd come up with some really interesting ideas if there was the funding to back it up. So, yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Baker, you ought to think about trying to get on the radio or something like that. You really have some talent.
He does. He's a radio voice.
The other night at that, at that foundation dinner, I thought you just did a great job.
I did, too.
I mean, I really, I'm always, of course, I love that, and the way you, you're kind of picking at, but also entertaining when you're going through and asking those students to, to say something about themselves. And that's really a great event.
Thank you very much.
We had good participation. Dr. Cantrell, Dr. Farmer, we had Lila, Elaine, Sue.
Judy.
Judy McAnally was there.
Adam.
Yeah, Adam was there, and it was just really, I always find that that's, something funny happens. I don't, I don't know exactly when it's going to happen, but it always does. And this year, you ran through it even, even better and faster, because, you know, you got a tendency to want to drag on some of that, but, I mean, it can. I didn't mean that derogatorily.
No. I understand.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Well, you really do a good job on that.
Thank you.
Give us some fun, man.
I appreciate that. If they have an open radio, I'll take it.
Good, good. I'll put in good words for you.
Appreciate it.
I'm going to take it.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right. Okay. Well, we're still on agenda item number six. Dr. Marlet, anything else?
I'm sorry, Board.
Anything else?
No, sir. Thank you very much.
All right. We're going to go to six C, demand study update, and that's going to be Mr. Finley, I believe. Yes, you are at the podium again.
Thank you. In Mr. Indy's absence, I've been asked to give a brief update to Weatherford College's demand study. On October nineteenth, Weatherford College will be holding this year's superintendent's meeting. During this meeting, one agenda item will be discussing vocational and workforce programs at service area high schools. Additionally, Mr. Butler has created a survey that will be disseminated to service area ISDs to assess where partnerships can align between ISD and a college. The second phase of this survey will be reaching out to business and industry to discuss the needs with employers. This concludes my update. I have to address any questions in this panel.
That's on the nineteenth here at the college, yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Please tell me those dates again.
October nineteenth, that'll be the superintendent's meeting. Mr. Rep's been coordinating that.
That'll be a superintendent's meeting?
Yes, sir.
High school superintendents across five counties.
Also the schools and ISDs and councilor's teams.
Okay. And then the business side of it, what, what does that entail?
That's going to be the next phase of the survey from my understanding.
And when does that start?
I have to refer, refer to Mr. Butler on that.
We're developing that particular survey right now. Prior to the demand study request, Dr. Kathy Johnson at the Wise County facility had started under the direction of Dr. Joyner, a similar project looking at local area businesses and their needs. My intent is to join forces with Dr. Johnson and expand that initiative throughout our entire service area. It'll be a combination of surveys, hopefully leveraged through the changers of commerce, and then actual interviews with companies that have the time to sit down with us. So we can find out what their real needs are and then see how we can respond.
The scope is all five counties or just Wise County?
All five counties.
Good. Great.
Anything else, Dr. Farmer? Hello?
Hello. Yes, sir. No, no other question. Thank you very much. That's good. That's really a good pursuit. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Finley. We're to item number seven, Dr. Farmer, future agenda items or meetings?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just notification that next month, Mr. Finley will be bringing you a brief report on access and affordability.
He said brief. Make it as long as you'd like.
Okay.
Item number eight, this would be Mr. Baker.
Yes, sir. A couple of things coming up. We have our children's drama production coming up, Little Red in the Hoods. Joe Nitschakowski has been doing that. I think this is year number eleven that Joe has done this, and very popular, and not only presents it at the Alkec Center, but also in schools around the area as well. They travel, so it's a great opportunity there. I already mentioned our foundation golf tournament. We do have some brochures up here if you'd like to be a part of that. And then after our next meeting, you just heard, our superintendent's meeting, October the nineteenth. We'll remind you of that coming up at our October meeting as well.
What time does that golf tournament kickoff?
One o'clock shotgun start.
I'd like to say that the Miss Parker County, Senior Parker County contest is this Saturday night at the Alkec Fine Arts Center, and our own Nancy McVane is a contestant.
That's right.
So I know she would appreciate all y'all coming to support her.
Who?
Nancy McVane.
Well.
And Arlene is her accompaniment.
Well, thank you.
It's going to be funny.
One o'clock shotgun start.
I'd like to say that the Miss Parker County, Senior Parker County contest is this Saturday night at the Alkec Fine Arts Center, and our own Nancy McVane is a contestant, so I know she would appreciate all y'all coming to support her.
Who?
Nancy McVane.
Well.
And Arlene is her accompaniment.
Well, thank you.
It's going to be funny.
Okay, if there are any comments or questions, all right. Item number nine, closed session. We're about to go into closed session. The agenda items, A, consult with college attorney in accordance with Government Code 551071. Item B, deliberate real property in accordance with Government Code 551072. Item C, deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee in accordance with Government Code 551074. So at this time, we will close the open session and, well, we'll bring it to a close and close that, and then we'll take about a couple of minutes and then go into our closed session. Thank you. All right. Thank you for your patience. We are now back in open session. And does anyone have any comments or any questions they want to ask, or comments to make? All right. We will now move to item 10, which is adjournment. Is there a motion that we adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
As motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Then we're adjourned. Thank you very much.
None of it? None of me.